Second best one in here.
Good evening. I like to call this regular meeting of the Cholo City Council the order. My real policy that all council members are present. We'd like to thank those that are with us tonight here in the council chambers, as well as those who may be watching tonight on City 56. We'd like to begin with an invocation. I've asked Councilmember Kelly if he'd lead us in an opening prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Hatch. Those who'd like to join with us, please stand.
Our Father in Heaven, dear Lord, I thank you for the very privilege we have in this country together as a city council. I ask that you give us wisdom to conduct the city's business in a manner that is best for the people we represent. I thank you for our staff. I thank you for our armed forces who are stationed home and abroad, and ask that you bless them, be with them, give them wisdom in their daily actions, and those who are in command over. I thank you for the moisture we receive this year, and of course, ask for more. Forgive us where we fail you, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the representative or representatives, one nation, one brotherhood, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we had a group picture, so this is the best looking the council will ever be this year.
This one. All these guys in their ties. I'm sorry.
Took my coat off, though.
He stood next to a post for about thirty minutes.
We'd like to begin with a call to the public. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that's within the jurisdiction of the city of Cholo may do so at this time, now that your time is limited to three minutes. Seeing nobody move, I'll close call to the public and come back to special events. Tonight, if I could have a couple of great people, if they'd like to come forward, Sergeant Ken Douglas and Sergeant Jason Spear. We'll call you by that title one last time here tonight, gentlemen. You just come up front here. We have a certificate of appreciation. We'd like to present to Kenneth, Sergeant Kenneth E. Douglas, and Sergeant Jason O. Spear with pride and respect and love from the Cholo City Council, with great honor and recognition for your commendable and dedicated service to the City of Cholo Police Department. You're truly Cholo's finest. Always remember that you made a difference. In your case, Sergeant Douglas, from August 28, 1998 to May 1, 2019, and Sergeant Spear, from March 22, 1999 to June 1, 2019. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Way to go. Good job.
This time, I'm going to turn the time to council. If they have any comments they'd like to share to these gentlemen.
I'd like to make a couple of comments. You know, I just, we thank these guys so much for what they've done, but who we forget about is the families. And I just want to thank both of you guys for giving them to us for as long as you have. And I appreciate you guys showing up tonight. It means a lot to a few of us on the council, probably all of us on the council. So, thank you guys so much for showing up tonight. It means a lot.
I have one thing to say to Sergeant Spears. I didn't really know you very much, except for meeting you at the shooting range with the game fish department guys, and all my little grandkids went out there and participating in that. So, I want to thank you for all the time you spent, not only on the Cholo PD, but also working things with the community. And I want to thank you and your wife for all the things you've done. Now, Mr. Douglas. Mister Sergeant Ken Douglas, I remember when you were dating your wife, living across the street from us, playing volleyball, and she was kicking your fanny a lot. So, but she, I want to thank you for the great.
That looks changed.
No. Thank you for the great job that you did for the city of Cholo, and for putting up with the stuff you had to put up with, and also with your wife. Thank you very much for giving him up for the times that he needed to be serving this community. And so, I just want to thank you and your family for everything you've done, too. Thank you.
I'd like to also thank both of you for your service to the community. You were little youngsters when you started with us, little baby cops. What's amazing to me is that this was really the life, the only life that your children knew. And your children grew up giving of your time and sacrificing. Your family has sacrificed, and I appreciate it so much. I'm really grateful that you're able to take this time and retire at this age and period in your lives where you're safe, and you can have some quality time with your family again. Congratulations.
All the best, then. If you ever need anything from the City of Cholo, let us know. And we just want you to continue to be law-abiding citizens. Those things you have to go forward. But thank you so much. We.
Shouldn't have probably told them about, if you need anything, let us know. I'm sure both of them have a list.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Next item we have is the consent calendar. Any item on the consent calendar that needs to be pulled or addressed individually? Not all read the consent calendar. We got consideration of resolution R-2019-20, adopting an annual policy and describing procedures for purchasing from the mayor and any member of the council, a consideration of the renewal of the agreement with White Mountain Mills on Wheels for managing the Cholo Senior Center for fiscal year 1920, consideration of renewal of an agreement with the Cholo Historical Society for fiscal year 1920, and then consideration of approval of the list of city-owned vehicles, exempt vehicles from registration requirement according to A.R.S. 282511, 38538, and 38538-03. We also have the consideration of approval of an annual purchase orders for the fiscal year 2019 to '20, and the minutes of the Cholo City Council Joint Study Session on May 8, and the regular meeting of June 4, 2019. We have a motion. We have a second by Councilwoman Kukavas, motion by Vice Mayor. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass six to zero. Next item we have is a consideration of appointment of an aviation advisory committee member. This is Reedhead.
Thank you, Mayor. Aviation Advisory Committee Member Jerry Howell is moving to Phoenix and has submitted his resignation effective June 30, creating a vacancy on the committee with the term expiring the end of March 2021. On April 9, the council interviewed four applicants to fill the expired terms of two members of the five-member committee. Following the interviews, the council appointed two of them, one resident and one non-resident, to serve on the committee. Of the two applicants who were interviewed but not appointed, Dante Edwards, who is a pilot, is the only one who is a resident of Cholo. As stated in resolution number R-201704, there is a residency requirement that stipulates that all committee members must reside in Navajo County with a majority living within the Cholo City limits. Staff contacted Mr. Edwards to gauge his interest in being reconsidered to serve on the committee, and he confirmed that he is still willing to serve. To maintain the residency status as required in the resolution, staff recommends that Dante Edwards be appointed to serve the remainder of Mr. Howell's term on the aviation advisory committee with the term expiring the end of March 2021.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Crittenen?
I move to appoint Dante Edwards to the Cholo Aviation Advisory Committee to fill the unexpired term ending March 2021.
Motion second by Councilmember Kelly. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass seven to zero. Next item is item 8B, consideration of renewal of an agreement with the Cholo Chamber of Commerce for fiscal year 2019 to 2020. Mr. Steve North.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Your consideration this evening is the renewal of the agreement with the Cholo Chamber of Commerce for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Staff discussed renewing the annual agreement between the city and Cholo Chamber of Commerce recently with the chamber's executive director. The attached agreement for council's review and consideration reflects $57,500 in annual support for the Tourist Information Center for fiscal year 2019, 2020, as discussed during recent budget meetings. This is the same level as the current fiscal year. Staff recommends renewing the annual agreement as presented.
Any other discussion, comments?
Yes, please. I don't know how it go about this, but I personally feel that that money's not well-spent where it's at. I think we need to move it or look at different tourist information stuff out there. I just feel that that's a lot of money. I don't think we're getting what we should get with that kind of money. If it's something that we can talk about in another meeting, then we can. But I just feel that we need to go a different route. There's too much social media is out there that we can do on our own. That's a lot of money that I don't feel that it's, that we get ours money's worth. A lot of money for what we're getting, so.
Councilmember Kelly?
I have a different view. And I know if the city were to try to take on this project theirself, especially with a front, a building, and staff, we would be talking two to three times as much money. We have now a building and staff that welcomes people and shares. And I think it is probably a topic worth consideration, but I think we need to go ahead this year and be considering it. What else, what other alternatives we have and such, and continue in the mode we're at. It seems like a bargain to me. I just, I don't understand enough to know maybe where John's coming. I take a different point.
Councilmember Crittenen?
I think one of the things to consider is that things are changing as the economics are changing, the communication systems are changing, everything. And I think that the Cholo Chamber has committed to review and start making changes to adapt to the different things that businesses look at, and the things that individuals that need information from the chamber. And I think that that's one of the, one of the things that is very important, that they are reviewing, they are making changes, they are attempting to stay up with the different communications that take place with the citizens that come in and need information. And I, once, or not once, but if that continues, and if they do make the changes required to adapt to the different things that are going on, then I think we ought to keep, keep this going.
Councilmember Hatch?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I think based on the discussions that we've had about what's coming at us as far as social media and other means of gathering information about the community that you're going to visit, I believe that we will undertake that, and we'll possibly come to a different conclusion than what we have today. But in the meantime, I don't disagree at all with all of the positions that have been taken here. But I think that this is a state of change that we're going to be looking at, that at this point, I would like to make a motion at this point.
Well, let's wait for some more discussion here. But you can make a motion, but can we finish with discussion, possibly?
Let's go ahead and hear the comments.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I know, Jimmy, you came up and talked to us and shared with us your concerns about what was happening, everything with the chamber and where it's going. And we do have some concerns, and we know that you're trying to change it and trying to get things going on. And I know change doesn't happen overnight. I'm on the other boards that we know that change don't happen overnight. It takes time to do that. I just, I just hope you hear our concerns and then try to help us out with this. Even if we don't do it this time, maybe next couple of years, you know, hopefully, things will change, and we can see some good positive growth on it, and then it will be a little bit easier to swallow for us.
Councilmember Leach?
Forget my name already. I guess, just to kind of, we've sat up here every year, and we approve this every year, and those comments are said every year, and then we approve it every year, but no change has happened. I personally haven't seen anything happening. Social media is huge. Does that mean that we have to have somebody run social media for that kind of money? That's my point. We talked about this every year. We approve it every year. Change was coming, right? But if you're in that kind of business, you don't fall behind change. You go with change. You catch up to change. So, we're just keep on, keep on, keep on, keep on, hoping that they catch up with change. This conversation happened last year. Did they keep up with change running our tourist information from last year to this year? Personally, no. But we keep, keep, keep. So, catch up with change next year, and then give it to them? Then that makes sense. But personally, me, just what I see for our tourist information center, I think that money can be spent elsewhere better. What it is, I don't know. We've done some research on other avenues. It's not ready for tonight, of course, but does that mean this has to be ready for tonight as well? I just think we just keep going forward, keep going backwards.
Councilwoman Kukavas?
I had a concern. Do we have statistics on the hours and the visits that you're seeing at nine o'clock in the morning? It seems to me that there would be more visitors later in the afternoon at five, when people are getting off work and that kind of thing, than nine to four. I'd rather myself sit ten to five. Does anybody have that answer?
Well, and also, I don't think we're open on weekends, are we?
Yes, from nine to one on Saturdays.
I'm going to just share a couple of things here. When I read over the agreement, this is an agreement between the City of Cholo and the Chamber of Commerce. It's not a one-sided agreement. There are certain things that the city needs to have been doing, and I think there are some areas that we could have improved upon or done better. I can't 100% blame one entity or another not doing what they should have done or could have done. There has been definitely observation, and we've also heard from the chamber that they realize that there has to be a change going forward. I don't think that we're in a position right now, tonight, to completely eliminate, and what do we do tomorrow? We're not there yet. But I think that if we, I think Councilmember Crittenen, Councilmember Hatch, myself, we've all set as liaisons with the Chatingham representatives of the council on that. But I think the direction should be, and I know that you're working with your board members, that we should give direction that possibly committee form the work of how we're going to evolve and what we're going to change going forward. But there has to be change made. And I'm not willing to go for a full year, but maybe we say we'll give six months, but within a 30-day feedback, we want to know how this committee is moving and the direction it's taking, to whether or not we're going in the right direction to continue, you know, going forward further. But I'd say no right now. We're not in that position. The chamber's probably not in that position, but we need to be in a position of improving going forward of what we're doing. And some real numbers saying by this date, we better have some realities. And I think we need to hold our own staff accountable for things that we say we will do, and improve our social media networking that we have, our accounting systems and things together that can make both the chamber and the city more attractive for tourism, you know? And if we can't do that, then by all means, we shouldn't even be in this business. But if we can, and I think we can, then we should go forward and try to work something, you know, meanable. It may be that we decide in six months that we're part ways, and we don't do it anymore. But it might be that we can work something together that's amenable for both parties, too. And I hear what Councilmember Kelly says, yes, the visibility, there's still enough people in chambers, but it's changing to this. You know, it's not walking in the door of what's going on. It's clicking to see what's going on. So, we have to be able to focus our dollars, you know, in that direction.
And I agree with that. Not 100%, of course. But when I go somewhere, do I walk into, that's what I'm saying, it's social media. How, I think even the chamber, knowing that this was on the agenda and knowing that there's some issues, do they have any direction tonight? I mean, if you're, if you're wanting that kind of money for our tourist information center, is there any kind of direction that we're going now? I mean, why do we have to wait six months? I mean, this is something we do every year. So, if we're falling behind, which I think we had that conversation a couple of weeks ago with the report, we already knew we were falling behind. So, as of today, what is the direction? Do we have one? Do we have anything moving forward? That's my concern. We keep beating it, keep beating it. If somebody was going to give me money to do something like this, not saying this, but like anything, and I can't prove I'm moving forward or a direction that needs to be happening when they're giving me that money, providing that money for me, then what service is that? That's my point. I totally agree with you. Not 100% for sure, but I just think we keep doing it, and keep doing it, and keep doing it, but not hearing any direction. We've talked about this a few months ago, or probably a month ago, and to this day, we have no direction of where we're going with our tourist information. We all know it can be better, but are we doing anything to move forward? Is that kind of what I'm, I don't hear anything. But we're going to approve to continue on again. And I just, I don't ever hear what we're doing to move forward in the right direction with social media. We all know that's where it's going, but we don't hear that. But once again, we approve it to go forward again. That's my only point. It just needs to eventually stop until we get some answers, I feel, of what we're doing to move forward, not just say we're going to. We say that every year, we're going to, we're going to.
Any other comments, questions? You were going to say something, Mr. North?
I was just going to clarify for Councilwoman Kukavas that the hours do change. They do have extended hours from, I believe, April through October. Is that correct? Yes. They have extended hours on Saturday for that, and they dial them back during the offseason.
But if somebody doesn't get up here by one o'clock, is what I just heard, to find out what's going on in town, then they've got to get on social media to find out.
Mr. Applegate, you want to share anything, your feelings from the chamber's standpoint?
Mayor, council, thanks for the opportunity to share with me. I was unprepared. I just wanted to come and listen tonight and hear the opinions. But I would say, right from the gun, that I hear and respect every single opinion that's been shared tonight, and appreciate the words that have been said. We understand, the board, myself, understands the importance of where we're at, and we've recognized that change. And as we've looked at the historical numbers over the past little bit, which I've shared with you guys recently, and we understand that change is definitely in the wind, and we need to do something about it. We've met twice. We have a basis of direction. We've changed our social media. Some of things have already started to change. And then with that, we know a direction or two of things that we're going to be doing, and we're waiting now for the next couple of meetings where we can get something solid. And then our intent is certainly to bring it to the council and to staff. And here's what our ideas are, and we want input from council as well, and see what fits. You know, these would be our ideas from the chamber and ideas for TIC moving forward, but we want some input from council to say, this is what we think. What do you think? And let's meet in the middle. I think what's most important is that the chamber and council and staff work together with a plan that works best for our community or small businesses in the area. There's going to be something that's going to come to the top and float that's going to say, this is the best idea for everybody, for all of it, and that's the one we should go. So, until I have that solidly, I don't, you know, we're working on that, and we want to effort that with you. Thank you for that, Peter, Mayor.
Are you willing to put a committee together that would include some council members, as well as some city staff people, and work together to try to formulate as soon as possible some ideas and plans going forward?
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
No, I guess my question is, can we modify this motion? We're looking at the next third of this year as being most important, probably, for the tourist information center. Can we condition this on a review at the end of three months or four months? Okay.
Short answer? Sure.
I mean, it's.
The way committees work and things move, I would like to encourage to see that be at six months, not to give two months to do nothing, but to make it all come together and have it work. And I'm hearing, we got to do something different. And so, I think, Councilman?
Well, just a comment on a timeline. I think there's, I think there's quarterly, I want to say a payment, but payments, can it be, when does that happen? Why don't we go to that?
It's September, and then it would be December.
Why don't we, I mean, I think September's fair. Before we give them the next installment, if we all agree that nothing's really changing, doesn't that make more sense? Go to the September?
I think council can do what they want. You can do it for the year. You can go for six months with the report back in three months.
I think till the next installment, if that, because to me, that makes more sense.
I disagree.
I guess my concern with that is the next third of the year is our busiest time of year. And it's our expectation that the Fourth of July, Labor Day, all those kinds of events are going to be very successful. But people, the committees are volunteer mostly, and they're going to be spending a lot of time doing those very important events for our community. So, I think that they get back together at the end of the quarter, and we make a decision in December.
I think six months is with, like I said, the summer months, the busy months and everything. That would probably work out better for everybody. It would give the committees time to get together, the council and the chamber, and exchange their different ideas and come up with a plan.
You know, and I was even thinking, maybe at our retreat, where we can have discussion at that, you know, where we can have them come and give us a report and where they're at on that. That goes about four months, and then that gives us two more months that we can discuss of how we want to do it with two months remaining on the contract.
We could do a report then, but I'm hearing what you say. You want some committee meetings prior then.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I think really by the first quarter, we need to have some type of guideline, direction of what is happening, and then we get another quarter to start implementing some of those changes, and then we can evaluate.
We agree on the sixth. Then I move to renew the agreement between the City of Cholo and Cholo Chamber of Commerce for fiscal year 2019-20, and authorize Ameritisign set agreement for a six-month period.
Okay. You have fiscal year 1920, but fiscal, well, our fiscal year, I guess, but it would end in calendar year 19.
And with that change.
Fiscal year, it would be fine, because it's our fiscal year. That's fine.
You have a second?
You have a second? Second? Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? See that pass six to one. Thank you. I understand your opposition to that, too, Councilmember Leach. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Applegate. Next item is item C and D. We have a public hearing regarding a. We have a public hearing regarding a final budget for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020, and proposed secondary property tax levy in consideration of resolution number R2019-19 adopting the final budget for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020. Mr. Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Sounds so exciting when you say it like that, Mayor. Maybe you should be up here instead of me.
What, the Mr. Johnson or the 2020?
Oh, the whole long speech. So what we have prepared tonight is a brief PowerPoint presentation to provide some information for those who may be interested from the public hearing perspective. And then what the staff will be looking for is adoption of resolution 2019-19 adopting the final budget. So what we've done is we presented the tentative budget, which was adopted by resolution back on June the 4th, and state law requires us to adopt a tentative, but once the tentative is adopted, then we can't make any changes for the final. So I just wanted to preface that, the presentation with that information. So the information you're seeing tonight is unchanged from the tentative budget. So we've shortened it up a little. It's mostly just pie charts and, and not as much detailed information, but if there are any questions as we go through, feel free to ask, especially you, Vice Mayor. So this is a snapshot of our, of our process for working through the budget. There are things that go on before January, but that's kind of when the, the meat of all of our discussions take place. We have multiple study sessions with the council, council and staff. We have a couple of town hall meetings to try and encourage the public to come out and participate and give their opinions on how the budget should be set up and drafted. And then tonight, we're at the final budget adoption, June 18th. And then our final portion, which will be scheduled for the July 16th meeting, will be to adopt the secondary tax rate. This is a reminder of the goals and priorities that we typically review during the council retreat. It's been unchanged for a few years, but we feel like it's, it's been successful for us as we build our budget to work through these priorities and try and program the revenues and, and tax dollars to address the ideas and goals that the council has established. This is a look at our fiscal year 20 budget number, which is 52.6 million. And if you look at fiscal year 2019, that gives you the dollar amount that we're expecting to spend. We still have a couple of weeks left in the budget year. We have some projects that are underway, and so we've tried to do a best guess on what we'll carry over and what we'll actually spend in the current fiscal year. But we always are conservative in our budgeting and our expenditures, and we try to underspend the budget each year. This is a breakdown of all of the revenues. We have 33.8% in beginning fund balance, which is either monies that have not been budgeted or monies that carry over from the prior year. And then we have 53.5% of operating revenues that are generated throughout the fiscal year, and that's the bulk of the money coming in. This is another breakdown of the, how the operating revenues, that total at 53% is 33.7 million. And this gives you an idea of how that money comes in. Most of it's in local taxes and utility fees, and then there's also state shared revenue. This is a breakdown of our expenditures, and we can see we, at the city, we're a service-based organization. We spend a lot of money on personnel, but we need personnel to operate the city, and a lot of the things that we're doing require that. We also spend a lot in operations and capital. This is a breakdown of the expenditures for the general fund. Public safety is a big one there. Also have airport and community services, and then a bunch of other smaller organizations that take up the balance. Our full-time equivalent positions, this is how we break those out. We did add a couple of positions this year. There was some changes with the dispatchers, the communications, then we also had some other changes that were reductions, so the net effect was the addition of 2.5. This is a breakdown of the capital and also the contingency that the council has in their budget for unexpected events. Spend a lot of money in streets and engineering, 4.8 million, and then water and wastewater, also a lot of capital projects that have been identified. We feel like we'll improve and enhance the infrastructure that we have and, and preserve the stuff that we've already taken care of. This is a breakdown of expenditures by service area. Public Works, Public Safety and Utilities take up the bulk of it, and we also have just the general government operations and community services. And then our debt services is a very small percentage of that at 3.7%. For the streetlight improvement district portion of the public hearing, this is a breakdown of how those numbers will be calculated throughout the, throughout the year. This is a property tax levy, budgeted at 233,000. Basically, the citywide levy pays for utility costs associated for streetlights and lights in the park. And we have budgeted a general fund subsidy of 15,000, and this is just kind of a safety net for us in case there are some unexpected utility rate increases, which happened to us a couple of years ago. This year, we don't think we'll need to make that subsidy payment, so we're, we're just planning that we won't, but it's there if we need it. And then the tax rate is 0.1401 per $100 of assessed value, and that's been unchanged since fiscal year 2016. So basically, the streetlight improvement district's doing what it was set up to do, which was take care of all the utility costs for the streetlights and the park lights. And as an FYI, on a home that's assessed at $150,000, it's about $17 per year. So we have the final budget adoption tonight. We're in the public hearing now, and then on the 16th of July, we'll have our secondary property tax levy. Then you won't have to hear me talk about budget again until next January.
Thank you.
Staff's available for any questions.
Any questions? Just appreciate your time and effort for your, your whole department for the budget put together. Thanks for keeping us on budget. Councilmember Kelly? I would just like to comment, believe it or don't, I don't have a question. Anybody want to make a note? No, I want to say that all of our questions that we've had in all of the meetings, I believe, have been fully answered by our staff, and I thank you for a clear presentation, and I thank you for a conservative budget. And for clarification, help me understand, I'm pretty sure about this, while the tax rate on the streetlight district has not gone up since 16, I believe it is, you put in the note, the money we collect has gone up a bit because assessed evaluations have gone up. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So if you're wondering how in the world we get by with the same money since 2016, we didn't, your assessed evaluation on your homes and other properties in the city has gone up, and that allowed us to collect more money. Thank you.
Also, piggyback on that, we also added more baseball fields and softball fields and more lighting on that too, so we haven't had to expend any extra money on those too.
That's correct.
Gene, I almost think you should have just asked a question. That would have been quicker.
Now, we're all unclear, Gene.
No direction now.
All the rest of them are used to it. You have to just get used to it. That's good. All right, I'm going to open this to public hearing if anybody has any questions or comments. Seeing nobody moved, public hearing, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to council for a motion. Vice Mayor.
I'd like to move to adopt resolution R 2019-19 adopting the final budget for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020, in amount of 52,602,793.
We have a motion, second by Councilmember Kelly. Any other discussion?
I have one thing to say, Mayor. Even, everybody has already said it, so I don't want you to get you on a high horse too much or anything else, but you and your staff did a great job. And we, and just like Kelly said, without a question, you guys did a great without, every time we had you go back and answer something, you came back with it and, and cleaned it up for us. So we definitely thank you and your staff for doing that.
I appreciate it. It's definitely a group effort, and we don't want to get too proud because next year's coming.
Councilmember Critten.
Carrie, we're talking about you because you really, really did a good job on the budget. Thank you.
Right, any other discussions? Call for the vote, although in favor? Any opposed? See that that passed, we have a budget for next year. Thank you.
Carrie, you don't want to give a speech or anything? I like to see you turn red.
At this time, the city council will recess into a special meeting of the Cholo Bluff Community Facilities District Board to adopt the final budget for fiscal year 2019-20 for the district. At this time, I'd like to call the special meeting of the Cholo Bluff Community Facility District Board to order by roll call. See that all board members are present at this time. Like to begin here, we, item three, we have a public hearing, resolution number 019-03 adopting the final budget and setting the tax levy fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020. And time, Mr. Justin Johnson.
Thank you, district board members. We, we have a presentation tonight, PowerPoint, just to give the board a breakdown. It's a follow-up to our tentative budget adoption, which was a couple of weeks ago on June 4th. As a reminder, for those who may not be informed, the special district was formed by the residents, the Community Facilities District, back in 2005. It's a separate unit of government. The debt issued after the formation of this Community Facilities District must be covered by the district and the assessed values there. Benefit of the debt, which is primarily infrastructure, must be for the benefit of the district. So there was a total of $2.9 million issued. There were two separate funds. There was a special assessment bond and a general obligation bond. Now, the general obligation bond portion was paid off in fiscal year 2019, and that was back in July of 18. And so it's no longer in existence, but we do still have the special assessment. The, the special assessment in 2007 were 2.2 million, $14,000 with an annual debt service payment of $151,020. There are 227 parcels in the CFD, and the Cholo Bluff Development Corporation owns 127 parcels, which is 56%. And that assessment fund currently has unbudgeted reserve of $203,564. The revenues for the assessment, we have that beginning fund balance, the 228 or 49, 499, and we have assessment billings annually. In June, there's the principal and interest billing, and then in December, an interest-only billing. The general obligation bonds, there were two taken out, one in 2007 and one in 2011. Like I said earlier, that those were paid off in July of 2018, and we don't have any budget reserves. We used all of the balance and, and contributions from the developer to pay that off. So our final budget number is $166,860. This time, staff recommends the board adopt resolution R 2019-03, and staff's available for any questions.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Thank you. This time, I'll open this up for a public hearing. Any citizen desiring to speak here on this budget for the Community Facility District Board may do so at this time. Seeing nobody moved, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to board members for a motion. Seeing that it failed for no motion, no.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Chairman, I move to adopt resolution R, number R 2019-03 adopting the final budget in amount of 166,086. Is that right?
Fiscal year ending.
Year, yeah, fiscal year ending 20.
We have a motion, is there a second? Second by board member Kukabas, any other discussion? Call for the vote, although in favor? Any opposed? See that pass seven to zero. This time, a consideration of the minutes of the Cholo Community Facilities Board of the special meeting on June 4th, 2019. We have a motion by board member Leach, any other? Second by board member Critten, all those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass six to zero. See no other business, I'll adjourn the meeting for the Cholo Community Facilities District Board. At this time, we're back into the Cholo City Council meeting from a recess of the Facilities Board District. This time, I look to council members for summary of current events. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few, I went ahead and attended a meeting for the Meals and Wheels. We are moving and doing different things, and we have a lot of projects going on. If, you know, the main thing that we're always looking for is volunteers, so if you can volunteer, please come down to the Meals and Wheels office, senior center there, or else call us, or even call our city manager, and he'll be happy to direct you over there. And the next thing is, I attended a county board of supervisors meeting last week and just had a good time up there, just listening to what was going on and, and where their budget's at and what's traveling. So just if you're interested in anything, please go up there and go to their meetings at, at nine o'clock on, I think, the second or third Tuesday, and send, listen to some of their stuff that they have going on with the county and, and get some of that information for you. That's it for me, Mayor.
Any other comments, reviews, updates? I just want to thank our citizens. I also thank, because tonight we have people from the chamber, I think they had a successful Cholo Days, our Derby Down the Deuce, and some other events that we had moving it to the Frontier Field, hopefully was a success and improvement in our, in our activities for our community. We're blessed to be fire-free. Today was the anniversary of when the Rodeo Chedesky Fire started in 2002, and I don't want to jinx anything, but it's a memory that we have. And with there being 19 fires in the state of Arizona right now, we're really blessed to have the moisture that we have and to be fire-free right now. And so we just encourage citizens of coming up here for the Fourth of July, that although it does have legalities here of fireworks and stuff, but please don't shoot them in our communities, just because it is not fire-safe. We're, we're still dry, we're still, we're wrapped, but use wisdom, use things that you have to be safe. And we just want to wish everybody a great Fourth of July. We're not going to have another meeting, and I think we have a lot to be thankful for. The patriotism that we have in our country, the red, white, and blue is special, and may long live the freedom that we have in America. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And there's a few things to report. In public works projects, the slurry ceiling of selected city streets began today and will continue through July 25th. A complete schedule is available on our city website. Work continues on the East McNeil Waterline Replacement Project, and the West Reedhead Waterline Replacement Project began Monday, and the, and that's in the Sierra Vista subdivision. Monday, and that's in the Sierra Vista subdivision. The other projects are beginning, are getting ready to start. And if you have any questions related to any of the projects, you can contact City Hall at 928-532-4000. And we just want to thank our citizens for their patience as we make major improvements of infrastructure around the city. The library's hosting a traveling planetarium from Arizona State Library for all ages to enjoy on various dates and times, beginning Monday, June 24th, at 1:00 p.m. The planetarium is a rare opportunity to see the solar system up close and personal during the day. And if you need more information on that, contact the library at 532-4070. There will be a free movie in the park this weekend, this Friday night, June 21st, beginning at 8:00 p.m. at Frontier Fields. There, they'll show the movie Aquaman, and they'll have beverages and snacks will be available for purchase at that event. And as been mentioned a little bit, our Fourth of July festivities begin Thursday, July 4th, with the annual parade at 9:00 a.m. along the festival clubs. Parade registrations close next Monday for early registrations, and then next Friday for the late registrations. Immediately after the parade is a free wet zone at Frontier Fields, 800 North Ninth Place for fun for the young and young at heart. It's been, it's a growing event and has been successful. Then at 3:00 p.m., the gates will open at the Cholo Football Stadium Complex at 500 West LoLinden Road for a day-long Freedom Fest with music, vendors, food vendors, and kids' activities. Our fireworks display, which will be a great one this year, will begin at 9:00 p.m., weather permitting. Information about traffic detours and a list of events is posted on our website. Friday, July 5th, is the Deuces Wild Rodeo Village Arena on White Mountain Road. The kids' events start at 2:00 p.m., and the rodeo will follow at 7:00 p.m. And more information on that rodeo, you can go to deuceswildrodeo.us for that information. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments? This time, we have executives scheduling the meetings. I know we've sent out the retreat meetings and any other meetings we're aware of.
The only thing I'll mention, our next meeting, we don't have a meeting the first Tuesday in July, so our next meeting will be July 16th.
This time, we have an executive session on the schedule tonight where we would discuss the zoning of AP 2010-31-020K, 20K Creative Development LLC, and the Little Colorado River Water adjudication. And we also have the discussion of consideration of records exempt by law from public inspection pursuant to ARS Section 38-431, and executive minutes June 4th, 2019. Need a motion to move into executive session? Moved by Councilwoman Kukavas, seconded by Councilmember Hatch. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass. At this time, we'll adjourn into executive session. Thank you for being here again, folks. Appreciate it.